...who at the last minute made a change from instead of, you know, going to ask for an extra kindergarten teacher, we transferred a third grade teacher to kindergarten to cover the unexpected surge in enrollment at kindergarten at Quinnesett in the last week or so of the summer. So, but where that, you know, came into play is where, you know, that meets this request that I have for you right now about a paraprofessional. And now our two principals are here. Rachel is here to talk about these situations if you should have questions about that in particular.
Okay. I saw Mr. Welch's hands and then Mrs. Avanzado's hand.
As it relates to the fund balance and to this situation, I'm happy to see that it's not going, they're not planning on taking it out of the fund balance. But I think, I'm not sure if Mr. Mudge was hinting towards this, but I certainly would be in favor of us seeing a running balance on the fund balance so that we know when the fund balance is being attacked, if you will. As we have to watch that very, very closely on where we're spending that money because we're going to need it come the next budget.
I think that's a good idea. We can make that happen, have it on each agenda.
Thank you.
We currently are.
Mrs. Avanzado?
Yeah, I just have one quick question and I wanted to direct it towards you, Dr. O'Jay. Regarding both of these pairs, you, do you consider these a need rather than a want? And the circumstances at Quinnesett are a need?
Absolutely. You know, I think we're beyond, you know, there's a lot of things that I want and that I'm not even going to ask for because I know it's just not right at this point. These are, these are needs, particularly one or two weeks into the school year, so.
That was my understanding. Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion on the floor and then I was going to make a comment. Is there any motion to pass E nine?
I have a question to ask.
So move.
I'll get to you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Mrs. Benson, and I said, then I have a couple of comments. Go ahead.
Now that the motion has been made, I will ask Ms. Danette when the school is open, but when the meeting is open, but I wanted a question related to what we were talking about, the new pairs. And the point was that these are new students to the...
Direct your question to Mr. Dr. O'Jay and if he needs to ask, Mrs. Danette, he can do that, but go ahead.
Can you go a little, did you give your whole question?
No, I didn't.
No, okay.
My question was, these are new students to the system.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
At the, two days before school started, missed the hurricane, we had an influx of kindergarten students with...
They all blew in with the tropical storm.
Well, they did. I don't know where they came.
But those are tornadoes.
Exactly. But they all came in and they have significant needs and in kindergarten, they need lots and lots of supports for them to be successful. So we really appreciate this position.
Well, I would like to congratulate you, the chairperson, give me a time, for doing this and taking care of that the way that you did. Because I don't think there's a time limit for dealing with a new student who comes in and has a 504 or has a special need, a special need. And whether it's a paraprofessional or a class too large, there's no time limit to that, not as I see it in a child's education. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your support. And as I've expressed before, you're all welcome to come out and visit our school and see our students. They'd love to have you visit. They love it when you come out and reach them. And please come out and get to know our school a little bit better.
I always enjoy your school.
Thank you. I know Mr. Thompson and I were over at the school on Friday and I must admit, I was expecting to see that this was more of a want than a need, but after I was there and we spent time during the lunch period and seeing the students and the teacher who stayed through the entire lunch period, so she did not get to take her own lunch. And it was that realization of seeing the students there that this really is a need. And we saw some of the children's handwriting on the walls, we saw them interacting with each other. And I must say, every time one of them acted up, it was a sort of thing of Mrs. Danette, immediately she could solve what that student was doing and went over there. But I thought unless we had been there and we were the extra people there. So it was that realization of there are a lot of issues that they do need the paraprofessionals in there. And so while I went in with one mindset, I came out and realized that there was a different scenario.
And she passed that information along to, I had asked about it, so. Heard you were on duty at lunch, Mrs. Danette.
She's always on duty if you go there.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of passing E nine, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, everybody. And thank you for coming out, folks.
Madam Chair, could we skip to item D one, please? If no one has an objection.
Does the committee have any objection to skipping down to D one?
Sorry, wait a minute. I don't even know what D one is.
D one is approval of superintendent's contract. If there's no, if there's no objection, we can go to that right now.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, the Rhode Island state law and the Rhode Island Attorney's General's office requires that we are not allowed to make the superintendent's contract public. But the things that we can say is that we have negotiated with Dr. O'Jay in executive session and we have come to, we're approximately, we've been in agreement on a three-year contract that has a starting salary of $138,000 and a 25% co-share for health care. Based on the negotiations that we were doing in our executive session, I'd like to know if there's a motion on the floor.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, I would ask all those in favor of voting on Dr. O'Jay's contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Well, Dr. O'Jay, not only were you formally given the position, but now you have a contract.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
You gonna sign it?
I will sign it, thank you.
Oh, good, good.
Be happy to.
All right, so that brings us back to items on the agenda and we're under unfinished business. Dr. O'Jay, do we have anything under the 2011-2012 school budget?
I don't believe we, we don't have anything right now.
Mrs. Benson?
As chairwoman of the Budget Committee, we had a budget meeting this week and at the meeting, it was a very limited agenda and it was focused on open forum where people could, who attended, could talk about those things because I can't stress it enough that we all know, and we know that by our own homes and everything, that the budget is going to be very, very tight this year. And one of the things that all of us are going to have to face is the pension obligation. It's almost like not being on the baseball team and it's winning and you didn't get on the field. So we'll have to brace ourselves to live with the pension obligations and until, and I still maintain until in October, when the Secretary of Education and our Congress allot money for education for the remainder of this year, next year, we are all at a standstill. So let's hope that we can get more jobs in Rhode Island and get more people coming here and maybe we can, and especially in North Kingstown, we can better our own lot a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Dr. O'Jay, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up under 2012-2013 school budget?
The items listed here are pretty much the information that Mr. Draper went over last time. I just think it's important to remind everybody of, you know, the serious concerns that we have about the pension issues that are facing us and how much, you know, that's going to mean to us next year. So we really have to be thinking in terms of, you know, what fund balance we have this year and doing everything we can to prepare for that.
Mr. Mudge and then Mr. Welch.
I have four questions here. Dr. O'Jay, I would like to get a list of, because we always hear about, you know, our maintenance isn't funded correctly or we can't do things for money and everything else. But, you know, I'd like to get some sort of indication from the office of what life safety, maintenance or operational expenditures we might anticipate. And by that I mean, not the normal maintenance repair items where you change a filter and things like that, but for example, we have the fire department that inspects our buildings and, you know, that costs us money. So I would like to see if, you know, what we have on the books for that. And basically that also applies separately to any capital projects. You know, we talked about the roof at Davisville and possibly even the high school here, the, you know, ventilation problems we have. You know, what are our top, you know, four or five or 10, whatever you want to say, critical that we feel are really necessary to fix, you know, repair in terms of the ventilation, as I say, for the high school or something else? Because I think what we need to do is, is address that and maybe go for the council to get additional money or something else. And I'm unclear, even though we have a plan, a plan is not, you know, something that we sit around and say, okay, we're going to vote or take some action to put a roof on this building this year. You know, so those are...
I do have something to address to that end, once we talk about the CIP, existing bond, upcoming item.
Good. And I'm just going to add one more. I'd also like you to consider, you know, we're, hopefully, we're going to get some stimulation, the stabilization, you know, money coming in. And one of the things that bothered me in the past was, for example, this turf deal installation. And we have some heating and ventilation problems here. Well, you know, I think we ought to be in a position to take advantage of potential stabilization funds coming in because of, and energy projects as well, is be in a position to say, we basically can save money by investing something today. Because I personally feel like this turf issue, and I hope it fails, be honest with you, today so we can come back and address it for the high school, okay? Nonetheless, if we can make an investment now of $800,000 that will start to save us money in the future, or at some point in time that it looks, you know, like it really will save money, we ought to invest in those projects. And hopefully, it might be we could free up some stabilization money to do that. And I know in the past, they haven't done some of this. But I think we're going to be prepared for energy projects, perhaps the one for the ventilation for the high school. I believe that could be a safety project or whatever. So I'd like to have, you know, maybe somebody address, you know, those types of projects that you think we really need to go and possibly if stabilization funds come across, we could maybe tap into or have ready to go. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
In the past, when we've done, when we've gotten ready to do the budget, the superintendent has come forward with a list of potential areas that we would be looking at with cuts and dollar amounts. A little bit further down on our agenda, it talks about the request to have a meeting with the town council in a joint session, in essence, to talk about our budget going forward for the next period. I would like to request, and I don't know if we need a consensus or not from the committee, of the administration for the first meeting in October, that we have a, the first shot at the list that we might have to look at for potential cuts for the next budget. Do we need a consensus or...
I, yeah, I'm not sure how to respond to that. I feel like I can put something together, but I, I'm just hearing this for the first time. So I don't want to commit to too many details right now because I'm not sure I would know the details quite yet. You know, I feel like, I know that in the past, the superintendent has done that, but after going through the budgeting process with Ned and also going to all the schools and talking, and looking at their line items piece by piece so that I can come back and say, okay, after I've done all this investigating, I feel like here are some areas that I could explore. Right now, I feel like I have some ideas, but they're really not tested and researched yet and, you know, I don't feel comfortable saying for sure, these items are going to be on a list and that would raise everyone's anxiety for the entire year. But I could give you some kind of vague sense of, you know, it could mean some of the following kinds of things. You know what I mean?
Yes. And I think that's what we kind of need to start out with.
Right.
And my reason for asking for the joint meeting was to sit in front of the town council, who is the keeper of the X-checker, who allows us to have a budget to work with, to understand where we think we're going to have to be in our next budget request. And it needs to be in front of the public as soon as possible so that they understand the situation. And instead of coming to the school committee after the budget has been passed and certified, they attend the meetings with the town council and address the issues directly with the town council. What happened last year with them coming, with the staff and the teachers coming in front of this committee and complaining about the cuts that we had to put through because of the budget constraints that we were under from the town council, they were at the wrong meeting and they were late. And the public and the staff need to know when they need to go and it's not to the school committee, it's to the town council. So the sooner we get that out in front of the public, I think the better off we are. Thank you.
Mrs. Avanzado?
Yes, I kind of have to support what Mr. Welch just said because I don't think we want to be alarmists, we don't want to be chicken littles, but at our last meeting, I think it was our last meeting, it might have been the two meetings ago, it was outlined for us by Mr. Draper and by some members of the committee that asked some questions, where we might be in terms of deficit. And it is very scary. I mean, it's 2.5 million best case scenario, something like that, or two or 2.5 million. That's if the town gets the max levy and gives us all the money. That has not been the pattern in the last three years. So I think we have every reason to expect and fear that we might be as much as $4 million in the hole. It's my understanding that the town council is discussing these kinds of issues in terms of their own problems, of which they have many, by the way, we all do, but they're discussing this at every single meeting they have. I think it's critical that we get this information out to parents because I agree with Mr. Welch. We had parents coming to us and it was really too late for us to do anything at that point. Once the council makes their decision, we don't really have, it's not in our hands and we need to be able to direct people where to go and when to go to advocate for the budget if they would like to do so. Or just to have them aware so they can participate. We all are aware we're going to have to live with less, we know that. But I think the public will need to be aware because it is going to be very surprising and very startling to a lot of people. So I think it's wise that we talk about this as often as we can and that we do any kind of like a generalized, you won't be able to be held to it, Dr. O'Jay, there's no way anyone could hold you to it. But just to get ideas out there, I mean, we've got to let people know because if we don't, we're not doing our jobs. So that's just all I had to say on it. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson?
I guess I'm an optimist, but if we heard last week, you have to think like you and Mr. Welch is thinking, Mrs. Avanzado, but if we heard last week with the emergency money that's supposed to be coming out of Washington and education and schools were top on the list. So I'm glad to see that you want us to speak to the parents, which I've always done, and get it out. But I'd also like to say, let's include our representatives and senators when they go back. I think they went back this week, didn't they, Mr. Mudge? And let them know how important it is because that's the money that's coming to the state that we are going to have to expect to get something. And I think that what you said was true, letting the parents know and also letting our representatives at the national level and letting our representatives at the state level know that these are the things that's been outlined for the emergency and we want you to do them to help our schools. If you notice, schools and education and unemployment were the first two things. So I'd like to add that to what you said.
I think that's a good segue into, Mr. Welch, the, you had requested that the, there would be a request for a joint session with the town council. So do you have a motion?
My motion would be to have a joint meeting with the town council for the discussion of the budget at the earliest possible convenience of the council. And it, of course, it would be in public. And I have also asked that all elected representatives be invited to attend so that they understand exactly what the plight of their constituents are as it relates to our budget forthcoming.
I second that motion.
Yeah, I second that motion.
I second it.
We've got many seconds and the motion on the table. Is there any further discussion?
Just one question, you think?
Mr. Thompson?
Sorry.
Did you intend for that to be a regular meeting of ours or was this going to completely separate? Separate?
And it'd be with the town council, so it'd be...
I think it would...
Wouldn't be on their night, it wouldn't be on our night.
I think we'd have to figure out a date we could get together.
Sounds good.
But just to add, I think...
Mr. Mudge, yes.
I think that if we look at state law and I stand to be corrected that we're supposed to have something in our three-year plan, and I'll send that out if I recall it, that we're supposed to do something by November, stop the budgeting process, okay? So this falls in line with that and with the council and perhaps we're going to need to be more, more active with the council on a monthly or at least every other month on this, on this crisis because I think it's going to be a crisis.
It is.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. If there's no further discussions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, I will make sure that we get that process going. I had mentioned to a few folks that this might be something that we vote on, so I will put some video from the committee to pass it on.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
I'll just say, one thing is, I think we ought to make sure in all fairness to the superintendent that, you know, he can have something ready in time, you know, the schedule can be flexible a couple of weeks, so I would not say one particular day, but let's coordinate that with the superintendent so that we give him ample time to put something together, which is going to be very difficult.
I would always coordinate something like that with the superintendent, have no fear. So, thank you. All right.
I have a question for you. When will you be getting the letter out to the town council, our invitation?
Well, I think first I'll talk to Dr. O'Jay and figure out what would be...
As soon as possible, probably give them at least a few weeks to set this up.
The mechanics of it, I knew you would have to talk to him, but...
Yeah.
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Dr. O'Jay.
All right, we are now down to item C, the CIP. And Dr. O'Jay, I'll let you speak on that since you earlier said...
Yes, you know, I, I'm a little cautious right now, but I'm hearing what may be some good news about the $9 million bond. Mr. Draper and I talked with Mr. Embry and representative from RIDE and we have some hope that we may be able to use the remaining money from the $9 million bond to fund the Davisville roof. So we're, we're hoping that that will happen. You know, I'm a little unsure that I even should be saying something about that right now until it's, it's more shored up, but things are looking pretty good and I will keep you posted on that as we move along.
But that is a critical item, I think. So if we, if we don't get that, then maybe we have to look at the council to get some...
Get some relief.
They reserve money to apply to that, I would think.
The, the use of this for the roof is pretty much the same kind of, you know, intention that the original bond was written for with other buildings in mind. So from what I understand, it doesn't seem like it would be out of the question. So we're hopeful.
Mr. Welch and then Mrs. Benson?
What's the balance left on that? Has it been spent?
On the $9 million bond, it's roughly $2 million.
I thought we'd use some of that for the Davisville...
It's $100,000 for the Wickford Middle.
Wickford Middle.
Yeah, I think $121,000 with change orders.
We use some of Fish and Cove for heat?
I suppose so.
Playground.
Just the playground?
I believe it was just the playground.
Perhaps we should have a...
Could you get us a balance on, on actual balance?
I'm not saying anything.
Mrs. Benson?
Mr. Draper prompted another question, but my main question was, that's the remaining of the bond that we had some years ago that has been held because of using it in the proper direction some, about some six years ago? Is that the remaining of that bond money?
Correct. It's, it's of the $9 million bond, $7 million was used.
Yeah. And using it for the playground at Fish and Cove, you said?
Yes, there was one done, I believe it was about a year, year ago.
Davisville, but Davisville.
I thought, oh, you mean an additional playground beside the handicap playground?
In the back of Fish and Cove, there's a playground. It's designed, it's designed for the pre-K program, yes.
On the side there? Okay.
If memory serves, I believe we used bond funds towards that.
I thought that was coming out of that year's operating budget.
I'd have to check it.
Check it because the roof project is very, very important. And of course, the pre-K playground at Fish and Cove is getting a double dose, which is good because they're building the handicap playground within the pre-K playground. Am I correct?
Those are two separate playgrounds where work was done. There was the pre-K playground, which is in the back of Fish and Cove, and the modifications we did this summer, which has, at the front entrance to Fish and Cove.
Yeah, I've been very dogging the modifications for the handicap playground and they have pre-K equipment there and I think I was there one day where the pre-K went to that playground. So we have two playgrounds at Fish and Cove.
Correct.
Okay. I'll have to learn where the other one is so when I go visit them.
All right. Mr. Mudge?
I'm not sure I caught something that Mr. Welch said, but I, I think what he said is, I would like to see, you know, what funding we've applied, you know, with these bonds, what do we have out there, what we have left or what we've applied to that. That could be helpful to know what potential funds are available for and/or committed. Have we committed some of these funds? I'm not sure when Mr. Welch was mentioning, and you mentioned something like some amount of money for Wickford Middle School or something, you know, do we have a list of what our commitments are? And I would say if we do, I guess we just approved one for Wickford Middle School?
Correct, the lavatory modifications, yes.
And that's why I'd ask for a list of capital projects throughout the district as well. Do we have other things like that that fall into that? But I'd also like to know with the $9 million bond and $2 million left, hopefully, and I'm just saying hopefully, through this stabilization process, if we're getting money for schools and things, you know, that we'll have that and be able to submit that as a project, okay? So, and we would basically save that money. So that's why I was suggesting we come up with a list of these stabilization, potential stabilization products, projects to apply for. Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is, yes, I think, do you have another question about the CIP?
No, it's not a question. It's a suggestion and it could turn into a question.
All right.
Mr. Mudge, you mentioned about the stabilization money and you're absolutely right and I want to ask Dr. O'Jay because he's moved up. Do we have a person that would be ready at a, in quick speed to write grants or whatever paperwork is going with this? You know, when we get anything from government, we have a rim of paper and questions and we want to make sure that you have personnel in place to do, be able to do these things.
For, for these kinds of grants or anything that might apply to this, I...
Stabilization money.
I have my trusty Skype-kick, Mr. Ned Draper, right here to handle that kind of a thing.
Oh, he marks the grants and janitors and...
For this kind of work, yes. If it had to do with IDEA, I would be talking to Rachel if that... If it had to do with professional development, I would be talking about assistant superintendent.
Just wanted to know if we had those type of people in place, because sometimes it's thirty-six hours.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, school revised 2011, 2012 school contract. Dr. O'Jay?
Yes, as you know, I already, I already talked about how we, you know, we, we have a school calendar that you have approved. The first four days of that calendar have been taken away from us with the tropical storm. What I have done for you is I have given you two options, and they're in your packet. Basically, if we do nothing right now, our last day of school will be June 20th. Last year, the last day of school was June 23rd. So, you know, we are a couple of days, a few days in front of that number. So I guess that's a good thing. But ending on June 23rd is an awfully late date. And we've been talking several times at this table about how we would like to do things to, to move that up a little bit. So what I am proposing to you tonight is that you look at the recommended calendar that I put together for number one, it would save us one day, and it would get us to June 19th. And doing so would be to use the, what is currently listed as the Rosh Hashanah holiday as a day of school. I am not proposing this as a permanent thing, but as a one-year thing only. I am proposing it because I feel it applies to relatively few people in this district. And we do have policies both for students and for teach, and for staff of the district, that if they need to observe that holiday, they can do so with no penalty. I've been asked, why wouldn't I do that for Good Friday as well in some sort of a move toward equity? And the reason I wouldn't is because just of the population. I would be concerned if we were to use Good Friday as a day of school that there would be more people who would want to take that off as a religious day of observance, and they are free to do so. But that could present to us a problem for getting substitute teachers. And, and I just don't, I just don't know how large that would be. But given the populations in our communities, I feel that that could pose a significant problem on that day, not to mention the number of kids that may be out and, and missing school. So I am proposing to you for your consideration tonight to approve of calendar number one, which would get us to June 19th, and would use the September 29th day as a day of school. And if you approve that, I will send out the communication by every means I possibly could think of right away tomorrow morning to let everybody know. And we will probably remind them a few days before that day by, say, an EdConnect message, just to make sure that they understand that that is indeed a day of school. So.
All right, we have a recommendation on the, from the superintendent. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Joe Thompson.
Move that we accept the calendar number one, recommended by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Welch and then Mr. Thompson.
I'd like to suggest that we hold the final vote on this, so the public has an opportunity to, to comment until our next meeting this month.
Just so if we did that, our next meeting would be a day, two day, two days before the holiday.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I'm not familiar with the dates. Okay, I take it back.
It's September 29th is the date we're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Benson.
I just, no, I would have preferred to do something like that, but it was just a timing thing.
Sure.
It's the only date we had for a school committee meeting right now, so.
Mr. Thompson?
I just want to come back and make my pitch for having us somewhere in the future, near future, tackle that problem of the heat up on the third floor in the high school. We still haven't gotten to that. And I think that was the cause of our not being able to take an extra day on the 23rd of December because of that problem. That's all.
Mrs. Benson?
I want to speak to the calendar. And I read both of the superintendent's suggestions for both of them. And I, as Mr. Welch said, talk with the community. I talked with community members who were of another, not the Christian faith, because that was a thing I had to settle with myself, knowing how we are ready in the place where Roger Williams settled. And freedom of religion was the reason for his settlement. And I just can't vote on one above the other based on the assumption. It's a good piece of work you did, Mr. O'Jay, and I compliment you for it, but that is one of my personal values and morals. And maybe you say I shouldn't be in public office, but I will not be voting on number one, not number two, because when you go to speaking about numbers in a religion, I don't think that should have any bearing on it. And I do know that we want to get out of school early. So I hope that we won't turn down the federal government when they mandate 12 months of school or 11 months of school and lose all of our funding because we have to get out of school early. I said that is aside to what I'm saying about is to make a point about religious holidays. So I will not be voting on either one of them.
Mr. Mudge?
You know, I've kind of had a mix of emotions on this too with, you know, Easter. I recall that when I was in school several million years ago, you know, we'd go to church and either seven o'clock mass or some people, and you know, we'd get your ashes and, or not ashes, I was Ash Wednesday. But, you know, I, I never really thought that, and I'm a Catholic, that there's a lot of religious celebration from a church standpoint on a Friday, to be honest with you. Okay? So, you know, in the future, you know, I'd, I'd consider, you know, going to school on, on Easter and, and like Mr. Welch suggested, you know, maybe you poll the community, you know, regarding that matter. But also, you know what, we've read before how charter schools do this and do that and everything else, and they have extended days and things like that. But suppose we had to extend for like for one week, school an hour and a half, or an hour and 15 minutes? That'd pick you up a day. You know, what would that do to the.
That would require a lot of work in terms of contracts. I think you'd probably have a loaded auditorium of parents and students who would have problems with it. But also, you know, it would require contractual items as well.
It would be something to look at, because, you know, I guess I'm saying is that, you know, this happens all the time. But, you know, as we hear, kids are going to school eight hours a day and, you know, whatever, blah, blah, blah. Or if we extended the, the school hour for, you know, the school calendar, just for one week at a time, you know, not continuously, to pick up a day, you know, that, that might be advantageous. It might even save us money on transportation, obviously, because we don't have to, for bus that day. But, but, you know, what would all the impacts be? It's just another way to, to look at that. Maybe the parents wouldn't, wouldn't mind a children going to school for an extra hour a day for one week only and pick up that, 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 that day as opposed to the end of the year. But again, I agree with Mrs. Benson, is we're going to go, these, you know, educational assistants says, let's go all summer. Well, then maybe we got to go all summer, you know? So I don't know. It's just another thing to consider, I guess.
I'll weigh in here. The, the one thing, I, I would remind the committee that in our policy, it specifically states that if it is somebody's religious holiday, that we can remind the teachers that the students who are of that particular religion are not to be given any tests or have any particular assignments that are due that day. And so when Dr. O'Jay, if this motion passes and he sends out that email, it's one of those things. We can also remind the staff of that, too. As for, you know, one of the issues of, I don't think we'll ever have to worry about having school on Easter, since that is a Sunday. As to adding an hour, it isn't just the logistics of the bus runs and that sort of thing. But you have to think about that we have 90-minute classes at the high school. And so adding an hour would be the sort of thing, you'd have to make special requirements as to working around the schedule as to which day you'd have an extra period. And that would become much more difficult in working around that schedule than it would at the elementary school. The elementary school might be able to do that sort of a schedule if you got over all the other implements of teachers' contracts and, and with the parent professionals and everybody else. But it would be the high school schedule and actually the middle school schedule that would become extremely difficult to navigate around. So it's, it's one of those suggestions that I had somebody given to me, and I thought, I like the idea. And then I started thinking through the practicalities of how the schedules actually work, and I saw that. So we have everybody speak now except for Mrs. Avanzato. So we have a motion on the floor.
I'm chair. Any comment on your comment?
No, you had your time to talk. We've each gotten our time to talk except for Mrs. Avanzato.
There might be another viewer on your.
Mrs. Avanzato, would you like to have, say anything, or are you fine? I'm ready to vote. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, and, and it's been seconded. So we are now ready to vote.
Better call the vote.
Go ahead and call the question, please. We'll call. Lynn Avanzato. Yes. Melvoy Benson.
No, I said I wasn't voting.
William Mudge.
I'm standing.
Kimberly Page. Yes. Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Wells.
Yes.
Motion passes for 1-1. Thank you. Okay, now we have the next.
May I say a word to the secretary?
No, we, we don't have a motion on the floor.
I want to say this, I want her to list in the minutes the reason for my not voting.
I think you already gave your reason for not voting. You explained that very well before, prior to vote. So I think you're okay.
I did, and I want it to be reflected in the minutes.
It will be. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the next part we have is approval of the advertisement of the assistant superintendent position. Dr. O'Jay?
Thank you. I'm, I'm simply asking right now to approve the advertisement of the assistant superintendent position. I understand there, there is some interest in, in looking at the job description as well as the title, as opposed to assistant superintendent, maybe assistant superintendent for teaching and learning or, or curriculum or something to that. And, and I'm happy to do that at our next meeting. But for now, I would like the school committee's approval, and I'm asking you to approve, to advertise for the assistant superintendent position.
I'll second that motion. Oh, I'm sorry. You can't make the motion.
I second.
Okay, so we have Mr. Mudge who made the motion, and we have Mrs. Benson who gave the second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Welch and then Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about how you're going to advertise it without the position being finite in the minds of this committee as it relates to not only the description, but remuneration, et cetera.
Right, right now, as the description is written up, there is nothing about, you know, the, you know, pay and, and that sort of thing. And that would be something to be, you know, negotiated and to be determined later. And, and I think that the way the job description is put together right now, I, I think it basically covers primarily what we're looking for. I haven't heard otherwise, maybe one or two other kinds of things. But I, I think we can put in the advertisement that some of these items may be changed to some extent, you know, in not a huge extent, but there may be some, some differences as we move along. And I would, I would let all applicants know of any changes as they occur.
I feel so you may be handicapped without having some approval, if you will, or guidance from this committee as to particularly the, the salary of the position, what latitude you might have in talking with someone. And so therefore I.
I, I think even, even with the advertisement, you know, the way it is, that I feel that by the time I get to a point where I'm talking salary with someone, that we will have that determined.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Benson.
Just because it's a lengthy process.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I think we're going to get to the position where we're in front, we're meeting with the town council, we're trying to defend our budget for fiscal 13, and they're going to say to us, why did you automatically fill one of the highest paid administrative jobs in the school system? Did you look into any other way of performing these functions? And I want to make sure that we're going to be able to say, yes, we did. I noticed, for example, in the PD here, it says coordinates district informational technology. But there is nothing in here about the consolidation of information technology between the school and the town. I don't see any percentage of work. There's curriculum, professional development, grants, testing, teacher evaluation, budget, transportation, SIP. There's all these functions are listed, but there's no indication of what percentage is applied to them. There's, I don't know whether any of this funding that we get from the federal or the state could, could go to pay for some of these functions. I don't know if we could go in for a waiver if they're unfunded requirements in this position. Perhaps we could get some of these waived. I know for, for sure that we're getting some kind of race to the top money that's going to go for evaluation. So I would, I would really like us to look very carefully into this, the whole position description before we finalize it and put it out on the street. That's what I got to say.
Mrs. Benson?
Referring back to the, and I rely on the secretary, but referring back to the executive meeting, I thought some of those questions were settled in the meeting, that he would advertise it and would not have a figure. And what he was asking, that we go along with some of these. And I'm sure if the town council needed a director of public works, needed a director of public works, they would certainly get it. And that's how important assistant superintendent and the person and the job description that he had is to the school department. Because we found out how important a director of public works because he was the director of emergency manning during the last week. So some of these things were talked over in executive session, and I left the meeting thinking that they were going to be, as we came to a conclusion. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mudge. Oh, and then Mrs. Avanzato. I'm sorry, Mrs. Avanzato. Go ahead, Mr. Mudge.
Oh, thank you. I certainly support this position, but I think we'd have to make it more clearly to, to help, to support what Mr. Thompson says. I agree with him, is, is that we need to really define this and look at the position. And his, his idea, it is formally your position, basically, for teaching and learning. And perhaps we add on operation, operations, you know, whether he becomes responsible for the operations of the department, it frees up, you know, your time to do your overall, you know, task and so forth. But I, I look at this as basically not a new position, but potentially an expansion of the curriculum and the teaching and learning task that you had. And maybe we should redefine some of the, the requirements we want in there. But when we use the word assistant superintendent, I look at that more as the curriculum director, the teaching and learning, you know, tasks and things like that, which is something we've already been doing. So, so, you know, possibly we need to add to the resume, if you may, but, you know, I do support that. And it, it is not, to my way of thinking, a new position. Thank you.
Mrs. Avanzato.
Well, I concur with a lot of the comments that were just made. I sympathize with Mr. Thompson in terms of, we got to make every effort we can possible, obviously, with what we outlined earlier. But what Mrs. Benson said is particularly apt, in my opinion. You know, as per the town council, we have the obligation of education. And we have a large budget. We spend a lot of money on athletics and, and activities, which is great. I mean, it's very enriching for our kids, adds a lot of value to their experience here. But we, I can't justify doing that and not having a, a director of curriculum who's going to be heading up our academic efforts, especially with all the increased obligations and all the things that have happened up at the state. So I think that if we can be creative and get the position down to, you know, to a value reasonable level, and I know there's probably. value reasonable level, and I know there's probably going to be some added duties and a little bit of change here and there, I think we should move forward with it that way. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Dr. Oge.
I appreciate the comments. I just want to address a couple of them. I'm perfectly fine with looking some more at this position and the job description and making sure that it covers the kinds of things that we talked about tonight. To address something that Mr. Thompson said about the IT piece, my role as assistant superintendent in terms of IT, as I'm not, I'm not a hardware person, I'm not, I don't have an expertise in information technology. What I, my role as assistant superintendent and Phil Thornton's role as superintendent would be to work with the IT department about the vision for how that would affect the education of our kids. What does that mean for the kinds of technology we have in our classrooms? How often do we replace computers, for instance? All of that kind of thing? And how does it relate to our district budget? That's a perfectly appropriate administrative job. And I just want to remind the committee that I have nothing against consolidation and in fact, it was a consolidation move to make the assistant superintendent do that kind of work. Because previous to this, we had an administrator just for IT and we had, and the IT department had more workers than it has now. So that, you know, that has already been explored and I feel we have gone as far as we can. Now, there's the consolidation committee and there is some potential for savings in working with the town. But in terms of setting the educational vision for how we use technology in this district, that is a central office administrator's role. It is not the town manager's role. It is not anyone from the town telling us how to do that. They can help us with hardware, they can help us with, advise functioning of telephone systems, servers, even, you know, there's some suggestion about staffing. I'm not too crazy about those, but those kinds of things. In terms of setting the educational vision for how this technology works, that is, that is a school administration role. And I feel it's perfectly appropriate with the assistant superintendent who looks over the curriculum and all matters related to teaching and learning. If we don't have technology here to help with teaching and learning, why is it here? We shouldn't, we don't need it. That's what we do. We're a teaching and learning organization, so that's all I have to say for now.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. Let's have a roll call vote, please. Melvoi Benson.
Could you read the motion back? We had a long discussion.
Could you read it? Yep. Please. Approve the advertisement of the assistant superintendent's position. Okay, you're looking to approve, authorize the advertisement for the assistant superintendent position?
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to amend that, please?
No, right now we have the motion on the floor and so we have to vote on the motion on the floor. If you want to vote against it, that's fine.
I don't really want to vote for it. But I think we ought to incorporate Mr. Welsh's comments.
The amendment would have to be adverse to what the motion on the floor is. So you either vote up or down and then you can make a difference if you voted against it. Okay. Roll call vote, please. Melvoi Benson?
Yes.
William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
No.
Richard Welsh?
Yes.
Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you. All right, we have, our next item is the bus contractors and that item has been tabled. So we'll move on to item...
I'm sure.
Yes.
May I ask why that's been tabled?
I don't think it's ready. Am I correct? It's not ready.
It's not ready, yeah.
It's not ready, so we can't vote on something that is not ready.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the food service RFP, the review of the RIDE drafted RFP. I'll just, I will take a moment to remind the committee that this was voted on earlier in the year to do the RFP. So we're not doing the vote on that, we're merely voting on what has been drafted. Dr. Oge or Mr. Draper?
I'm going to ask Mr. Draper to talk about, a little bit about this.
Per the committee's action, I believe it was back in June, we were tasked with putting together an RFP in consulting with RIDE. They also had requirements at the state level that they expected of us in doing a local bid. Some of those deal with grant terminology, some of those deal with wellness policies and so on. So if you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at the draft of the RFP, you can see there's a lot of language in there that deals with a lot of detail. There is a section in there that was developed specifically for us that deals with our situation with the food service manager. There's also language in there that specifies that they must address what will happen to our present staffing. So those things are included. I also know that I believe it was either at a budget meeting or perhaps through negotiations, we had discussions about this and a member of the school committee also had some input.
All right.
May I ask a couple of questions, please?
Let's get a motion on the floor first and then you may ask questions. So to approve.
Second.
Could I?
Mr. Thompson specifically asked me, so, yes, he wanted to make a motion. So go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Presently at the high school, special needs students work with our employees to assist in all aspects of food services. The FSMC must include details as to how this will be accomplished. If this is included, then I think we're ready to go on this. And then I also have one other thing that's occurred to me just tonight, which I'm sorry I...
So you're making a motion that that be in there, am I correct?
That we add in what I just said. Correct. Want me to read it again?
It is. What he's asking is, is that the RFP be approved with this added language and, I'll second that.
But could...
Can we do that?
Could you say that again?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Thompson, if you could read that off again.
Presently, at the high school, special needs students work with our employees to assist in all aspects of food services. The FSMC must include details as to how this will be accomplished.
What Mr. Thompson is doing is, he's asking that this proposal be approved with the additional language, that includes details as to how the high school special needs students will continue to work in the food services. That's his motion. And I know Mary Ann specifically helped Mr. Thompson to prepare this motion, so that's how I knew this was coming. So we have a motion on the floor and the second, and now we go for discussion. Mrs. Avanzato, then Mr. Mudge, Mrs. Benson and Mr. Thompson.
Just briefly, at this point, and I think a lot of committee members have said this, I am not and do not support outsourcing food services. I am voting yes to put the, to look at the RFP and approve the language of the RFP for information gathering purposes only. And this would be an area that I would look at, you know, lower down the list for me, because I think it's a very important program for our kids, for health and safety, wellness, and also the aspect that Mr. Thompson just included in the, in the RFP now, which is our special needs students participating in the program. And I think it's, it runs very nicely the way it is right now, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Mr. Mudge.
Well, Mrs. Avanzato took some of the words out of my mouth, but I do agree with her, obviously, that, that, I support what she said. A couple of questions I had was, you mentioned somebody, who actually developed this contract for us, Mr. Draper?
Rhode Island Department of Education.
Rhode Island Department of Education, this is a boilerplate type of thing that the Department of Ed puts out.
Correct. And it's been modified for some of our unique needs.
I did miss something in here, I scanned through it, but, you know, I didn't see anything in here that said if we, you know, putting an RFP out is, you know, getting recommendations from like 10, 10 different school districts as to their satisfaction rating with the, with their program. And I think that that should be submitted as well. I've heard all kinds of them, with from Cranston to Newport and other places, people just haven't been satisfied with some of these services here. And again, I'm going to echo what Mrs. Avanzato said, you want to put it out for information for purposes, fine, but again, I'm going to make the statement that, that I'm not going to, I think the folks in our town and the cafeteria particularly, as well as custodial and other people, you know, they're doing a good job, they're working there 40 hours a week or 30 hours or 20, whatever they're doing. And if, if the only intent is to save, save some money because we don't want to pay people benefits or sick leave, I'm not going to support that. I think we have a moral obligation, okay, to help the, you know, to support the people of our community. And I think it's, it's terrible to think that we can get people to come in here, you know, for a few dollars less, which will give up, you know, pension or give up medical benefits and, and that just calls me, what our whole society is becoming, is let's let the next guy down on the ladder, you know, do the work. It's just appalling and I'd rather keep our staff, the working and know the people we have, we have years and years and years of people being in the cafeteria as well as the other departments here, years. We'll never see this if this thing gets contracted out.
Mrs. Benson.
I'm going to continue. I think all of the audience and all of you have heard many statements that I've had against this, but I'm coming tonight from a different viewpoint and I would hope that you would grant me the time to finish because I did some research. And what I want to point out to the committee, the employment and the unemployment, not of the state, but of North Kingstown. In June of last year, at this time, April or June, we had the employment of, it comes out in July, last July, so I'll have to use July of 2/10. Within North Kingstown, we had a labor force, people who were qualified to work, and they are called labor force, of 15,769 people. June, July of 2/10, we had 14,281 of those people employed. Unemployed, we had 1,488, which gave us a 9.4 unemployment rate for North Kingstown. Now, we're talking about outsourcing jobs and the last report that we have from the Department of Labor is that in July 2011, we had a labor force of 15,410 people. We had employment at 14,077 people. Unemployment, we had 1,333 people, which rose from 9.6 to 8.7. Now, we've been sitting here talking about looking for money from the federal government. We heard, we hear and we hear from our governor all the time, put people back to work. And here we are, going to take the lowest paying jobs within the school administration to save. What are we saving? We are not saving for Johnny to feel better when he eats his lunch because someone serving him may not understand what he's saying. We're not having the women that know these kids and could look at them and tell, I'm going to give you an extra dose, extra helping today, to prove to these children that they have the love for them. I'm not voting for outsourcing because instead of racing for the top in education, this puts us in racing to the bottom because we are putting people in our town. These are no other figures but for North Kingstown. And I agree with the members sitting up here, it may be long and you might have to be out at 10 and this, that and the other, but sometimes when you have a public obligation, you need to explain it and take time with the public. I asked Mr. Draper, how many man-hours did it take to write an RFP? If I'm correct, he said over two hours, am I correct?
Yeah. And when you...
To add your salary into two hours.
But it ends up taking substantially more than that when you figure in the time after you accept a bid and you have to review all the proposals and do that kind of analysis.
Okay. So from the get-off, that's money and time that he can be working with our new superintendent to get some of these dates and get the budget up. So I'm going to make a motion, after this motion passes appeal, that we do not consider outsourcing for the school year. We're on 10 and 11, so when we come back and with the budget, it will be for 11 and 12, am I correct?
It'll be 12 and 13.
12 and 13.
12 and 13.
Am I correct?
12 and 13.
Okay, so I wanted to make my speech before you made your vote, other members, and I want you to think hard because it could be your neighbor, your friend, your golf buddy, and tomorrow, it's not the cafeteria, but it could be you, whether you teach, engineer, state worker, professional worker, or whatever you are, tomorrow it could be you. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Um, let's stay on this one for now. I have a comment. There's another paragraph in here that just hit me tonight, but we haven't even talked about it and it's not related to what I just put in. So I'm just turning it back to you.
Mr. Welch.
I'd just like to say that voting on this RFP is, is nothing more than voting to get people to respond to the potential of doing food service for our community. It's nothing more than getting information and being able to understand when we sit down in our next budget session, where we have to look for money. Now, it's fine, all well and good that you want to say that you don't want to cut food service the way we have it right now, and I agree with you and I've so said that in the past. But the reality is, as we mentioned earlier, anywhere from $2.5 to $4.5 million over the current budget is what we're looking at going forward. And if you want to close your eyes to this particular situation and others, which are going to be on the table, and that's why I asked the superintendent for a list, then you're going to be in the same place where you are right at this moment, and that is with a budget that the taxpayers cannot afford. Now, all of those other things that you said, I agree with, but you need to have the information to be able to sit there and point at different aspects of our budget and say, we are here primarily for education. We're not here as in some instances to provide transportation, that's not part of education. We're not here to provide meals, except for those people who need free and reduced meals. We're here to educate first. That's our top priority. And that means to have teachers and principals and school buildings, those are things that we cannot cut. We may have to increase... buildings. Those are things that we cannot cut. We may have to increase class sizes, and that will require the conversation with the teacher's contract to change those levels. There are a lot of things that we're going to have to look at. But to shut your face, yourself down, and say, I am not going to do any individual item without having the information in front of you, it's dealing out of lack of knowledge and the ability to look at the items. And I'm sorry if that goes against your grain. That's not doing what you need to do, and that's your due diligence to come up with something that protects what we have as best we can and makes it affordable for the taxpayers in this community. Thank you.
All right. Everyone's had an opportunity to speak. We have a motion on the table.
May I speak?
No, we're not going to have back and forth. Everybody has been given their full, more than three minutes to speak. And so now, the motion is on the table.
Point of order.
Lorraine, if you could have a roll call vote, please.
Uh-uh.
No, I'm not going against a point of order.
Point of order.
Is what you take when there is some sort of, somebody has not gone, or has gone against the rules. This is nothing outside of Robert's Rules of Order, so I am not acknowledging your point of order.
Well, Robert Rule of Order is not in the classroom with a hungry child.
Thank you very much.
Why do you always resist?
Mrs. Berkland has the floor now to do the roll call vote.
Why do you always resist conversation between members? It's outrageous.
Okay.
It's dialogue. This is America.
The time now is, and you had your time.
No, we can't answer questions back. We can't have dialogue between ourselves?
So it is now time to take the vote.
Kimberly Page.
Terrible.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzano.
Yes.
Bill Boyd Benson.
No.
William Mudge.
Yes, on the basis it's only for informational purposes.
Okay, motion passes five to one.
All right.
You need to clear one thing up. This is a school committee meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson has the floor right now. Mr. Thompson has the floor right now. Mr. Thompson has the floor right now.
There's a paragraph in here that doesn't make sense to me, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to see this before. But paragraph I is saying that there's going to be a full-time food service manager under contract to be incorporated within their management structure. And then the very next paragraph says, include details regarding how current staff will be offered employment with the FSMC, food service manager accepted. And I just wanted to make sure that we are all clear on where the food service manager position is going to end up. Or maybe we're going to ask them, are they going to tell us, here's how much we would pay them if they worked for us, but we still have the option of having them work for the school department?
It's my understanding, based on the fact that the school committee has a contract with a food service manager, is the school committee's intention to retain that position as a school department position?
Does that have to do with the contract?
Then that paragraph I is going to just be for information only? They're going to tell you how much they'll pay and include the food service manager in their management structure?
It could have an impact on what they're willing to do relative to guaranteeing income. Because if we have a food service manager that the district employs, they may or may not agree with having that kind of management structure. Because then we have our employee controlling some aspects of their operation. Something they need to be aware of if they're going to bid on, they're going to bid on this business.
All right. We have had, I see your hand, Mrs. Benson, but we pretty much kind of disposed of this item.
Maybe it's for you, but I have a question.
You have a question?
And I have a statement to make.
I'm not doing any statements. We've had a motion on the floor.
You're not doing any statements.
So now, we're going to move on to item number six, the NKSD Transportation Services Consulting. Dr. Ojai, do you have something you want to say?
In your packet, you have the RFP for the transportation services in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions about this.
Questions, please.
First off, do we have?
Question, please.
Yes, I'll get to you. To follow our procedure, do we need to take a, do we need to take a vote on this today, Dr. Ojai? Is that what you're asking for us to do? Or what is your request? I know the information in our packet.
At the request of the committee, you had asked that we have this ready for you. It is now ready. I don't know if anyone would have questions for Mr. Draper about the contents or about the details in it. But this was approved by the school committee previously to bring this forward, and that's what we're doing at this time.
Okay. So we don't need a vote on it today? This is strictly for informational purposes?
That is your choice.
This is an RFP?
This could be something that you could look at, and we could have a discussion on next time. That would be fine.
I think we obviously have to have some sort of a vote, one way or another.
Yes, we will have a discussion, but I wanted to make sure.
When it comes to the cost of this.
Yes, Mr. Mudge, I wanted to make sure I understood what Dr. Ojai wanted to do with this next, before we moved on. So you are looking for a motion then to approve it?
Yes, but it would be okay with me if the committee wanted to wait till next agenda to do so. But yes, I am.
What cost would that be, Dr. Ojai?
Is there a motion on the table?
Please identify. Let's have a discussion before we put a motion on.
Or do we want to hold off on that?
What is the cost of this?
Mrs. Avanzano.
I just want to, I would like to talk about process for just a second. The process outlined by Robert's Rules of Order is that someone makes a motion on an agenda topic and a second, and then the discussion takes place. Now, we didn't used to do it that way, but recently, we've been following that more. And that's what's in Robert's Rules. And it works to at least have a structure. Doesn't mean the vote's going to go through. It could go down. I mean, anyway.
The comment? Does Robert's Rules say that we can't, well, Mrs. Avanzano, are you just recognized? Are you going to recognize me?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes. And what is your motion?
The motion is to do the, as we requested, the RFP for the audit of the school district's transportation department.
I'll second that for discussion.
Mr. Mudge, and then Mr. Thompson.
Oh, first of all, I'd like to know what's this going to cost?
Right now, in the document that you have in front of you, there is no cost.
Well, that's my point, is we're going to send something out. It's going to, we're not going to get this for free. It's going to be some cost associated with this, isn't there?
That would be one of, that's what the bidding process is all about, that they would let us know what they can do this for. You know, we have a lot of demands in this document. And the committee did not give to the previous superintendent and Mr. Draper any details on how much they would like to spend on such an audit. So that number is not there. It can be if somebody wants to propose, say, don't go any further than this much money. But so far, we have not gotten that direction from the school committee. So therefore, that is a moot point in the document at the moment.
But it is requesting for audit services of what we're doing today.
It, all of it is spelled out on the document.
But that's what I'm saying. It's auditing the efficiency of our operations, the mileage, the everything that we have.
Yes.
And if I may, what would happen is this RFP goes out, bidders bid on it, they tell you what they would perform this task at what price. And then at that point, you decide whether or not you can afford that, or you don't want to afford that. So you wouldn't be putting a price on it. At this point, the bidders have to tell you how much it costs to do this. And this was something that the school committee requested that Mr. Draper do a few, several meetings ago, to do an audit of transportation. So Dr. Ojai is bringing this to you tonight, simply at your request that it be prepared. So whether you vote on it up or down, it's certainly a committee's prerogative. And Dr. Ojai is just bringing it to you because you requested it in the past.
All right. So just to let people know the order, I have Mr. Thompson, then Mr. Welch, and then Mrs. Avanzano. Mr. Thompson?
So once again, this is going to be an RFP for transportation services. It does not mean we're committing ourselves to contracting out.
Absolutely not.
It means that we are looking into the private sector to find out how they do things and what they charge for them.
Actually, you're, no.
This is, this is to audit our own services, to look for efficiencies, to give us suggestions on how we can do what we're currently doing at a more efficient and a better price. It is not contracting out for any services.
Do you have the right number of buses? Do the buses run the same right routes? Things like that. That's what you ask for.
We certainly had the former school department.
Mr. Thompson has the floor right now.
No, that's what I wanted to find out. So thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Welch?
Again, when I made this motion back in April or May, and it was voted on to go ahead and do it, the idea is to audit the operation as it stands, to make sure that we are taking advantage of any and all efficiencies, route designs, mileage, et cetera, how many buses that we need. Do we have too many? Do we have not enough, et cetera? And this is what we're hoping to get out of this. Out of all the departments in the system, transportation is one that has not had an efficiency examination, if you will, to make sure that it's operating to its best efficiency for us, the taxpayers, and the school department.
Mrs. Avanzano?
Yes, this actually goes back all the way to reconfiguration, when parents urged us to do this, if you recall. I don't know if any of you remember that. We were asked to do some sort of a review type of thing, or audit of our own transportation system to see what we could do, whether we could get any efficiencies. And I recall, we did a little bit of research, looking online at different companies. A lot of districts do this. What I would like to know is that this looks like a pretty comprehensive review, like a total audit of everything to do with the transportation system. Ballpark, do we have any idea what that runs us, ballpark?
Won't have any idea. The bids come in.
No, well, I had an idea when I did the research. It was online. I mean, there was several, like, there was a pretty good idea. I don't recall right this minute.
And I don't think we should be saying anything about a number, because if you say a number, then you're going to tell the potential bidders.
All right. Okay, my point is, I might need a little bit more time, like, till the next meeting, to look into that, because I haven't done that. I guess I needed to do that, but didn't.
Mrs. Benson?
Mr. Draper.
I'm going to mention it now.
Do you recall that we had a transportation committee, and Mrs. Jill Johnin, and several people who is known in the transportation department, and especially the town, made a report? Where is that report? It seems as though we are going, we are taking the water wheel, going back over the same thing.
Is this the report that had to do with the K-5 reconfiguration?
Yes. No, no. This was a separate transportation thing. And Jill Johnin, and Mr. Walter Cattell, and they came back with recommendations. And at that time, we had too many buses. What happened to that, what happened to that report?
That does not sound familiar. I do know.
Well, maybe you didn't look at it.
He said it might have happened before he was there.
Oh, he was there.
Well, if it were suggestions since I've been here, I do know that we've implemented a variety of things that we provided as an update through that transportation subcommittee roughly a year and a half, two years ago?
No, you're speaking of two different ones. That is related to the students and the way they get home. This was a complete transportation committee. I don't know why you don't remember, Mrs. Avanzano, because you were an advocate during that time with Mrs. Johnin.
There was a special education transportation subcommittee.
That was separate. I was the specialist with special education.
Yes, I recall that. I vaguely remember that.
This was separate with Mrs. Johnin, Mr. Cattell, David Carwell.
Yes, I do vaguely remember that.
And some more citizens in town. What happened?
Do you recall what the timeframe was on that?
I don't recall what the timeframe was.
I recall this survey, if you would want me to speak.
Absolutely. You've been speaking, and this is important.
Well, the survey that I'm pretty sure that Mrs. Johnin was involved with was the survey that had to do with when we were doing the reconfiguration. And it was part of Kathy Brown, Jill Johnin, and Mr. Cattell was part of that. They asked him to join in on that. So this would be something very different. And this would be something that if we got bids that we did not like the price, we did not, we would not have to follow through. Now, this is merely to be asking the question. But that's what Jill did. And I just happened to be talking to her today about a different issue that she had written this on. So.
I'll accept it for that. But I want to know.
Might be helpful, look at that.
I want to know why we are going out for a study and writing an RFP. I'm going to be frank, and tell you here, and that the whole town hears over the thing, I think you're fulfilling some promises, and you're trying to disguise it some way. Because it's been in the making that we want to get rid of the buses. We kept, want to outsource the buses. We came up with ridiculous things in their contracts, like buy their own insurance, things that are too ridiculous. So I'm going to say, and that's what I mean, I think you're kind of fulfilling some promises that was made that you get otherwise. And I may be wrong, Mrs. Avanzano, but if I'm wrong.
Dead wrong.
I don't think I'm dead wrong, because I'm living.
Okay, I'm going to allow, Mr. Draper, did you have something that you wanted to say?
I just, I'm not sure if committee member Benson's comments are directed towards me or in general, because.
In general.
Okay.
Mr. Draper has the floor.
You're the chairman, and in general.
Mr. Draper has the floor.
Okay.
You're the chairman, and you're in general. You have followers.
Mrs. Carol, Mrs. Benson, I think.
I'm through with it, Madam Lawyer.
I think you don't understand. This committee asked him to do this. Mr. Draper didn't.
I said the same thing when we asked before.
Mrs. Carol has the floor. Mr. Draper did not go out and say, we need to do a transportation audit.
Oh, he got his orders from someone else.
The school committee voted for you to ask him to do an RFP for transportation audit. He's only taking orders from the committee.
Which is leading up to what? Why we need an audit?
All right. We have had, everyone had discussion. Do we want to continue to have further discussion on this? Because I do see hands.
I've had my hand up for half an hour.
Yes, and you did, you were the first person to speak, Mr. Mudge.
Okay. I'm going to address Mr. Welch's comments, because they're germane, I believe, in terms of this study. And I've been an advocate of, including the janitorial contract and even the cafeteria contract, is to get information to make decisions. I couldn't agree with that more. We need to do that. And I'm glad to see that this is transparent. I was absent for either vacation, some health reasons, so I might have missed a few things. But nonetheless, I think I recall going back as far as perhaps February, even March, saying that we have an expert in this community, Mr. Cattell. And I think I mentioned that Mr. Cattell, we could probably have him come in and practically do this, a survey for nothing. And I will say, when this comes in, they want fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, whatever they want to study it, I'm going to go back and say again, why don't we ask Mr. Cattell to come in and look at this? In nineteen ninety-eight, the Bacon and Edge Report stated in there that North Kingstown had the most efficient transportation system in the state of Rhode Island, essentially. Words aren't specific like that, but that's basically what they said. They thought they want to find all kinds of, you know, savings and this and that. Well, in the end, it's in the report. All you have to do is fill out the Bacon and Edge Report, and they commended Mr. Cattell. And I think it's a shame we don't take advantage of him coming in and looking at this, and then having to pay people an exorbitant amount of money to do this. So I do, I do agree we should do an investigation. But when it comes in, and the cost, whatever they are, if they're outrageous especially, then I would, I would say that we consider requesting Mr. Cattell with help. And maybe he can be an advisor for us in interpreting the results of the transportation effort. Maybe he can audit the auditor. Thank you.
Mrs. Avanzano?
A couple of things. In terms of Mr. Cattell, I've had a couple of conversations with him also. I guess probably everybody has. And he is and was the bus guru. I don't, I don't know. I think he said last time I saw him that he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to take the audit on. I could be wrong about that. But I mean, I don't know that we can hand the audit to someone in that fashion. But I like the idea of. But I like the idea of asking his advice or input on anything we do because he's very knowledgeable about it. That's the first thing. Secondly, I was one of the people that asked for the transportation audit, myself and Mr. Cerisi, Mr. Welch, and there were others, as well as members of, people that wrote to us, members of the public and citizens who asked us to do it. I have no intention of outsourcing busing. I not personally think that busing is an issue of really closely related to student safety. I'm not at all interested in looking at that personally. And I know others have said the exact same thing. So, it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with running our own system as well as we possibly can and showing the town council, the public, and everyone else that we are doing everything we can to save money within our parameters. That's, that's what I'm looking to do. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Mrs. Burglum, could you call, could you ask the questions? William Mudge.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Mel Boyd Benson.
I'm going to say yes. And I would like for it to be known just what Mrs. Avanzato said and include her statement in the record. This is not for outsourcing the buses. Otherwise, it's a no. So, can that be included in the record, Madam?
It is in the record. It is in the record.
Okay, and I'm voting yes, which will not include anything connected with outsourcing.
Correct. The transportation audit is what you're voting for.
Uh huh.
And it's six to zero, passes six to zero. Thank you.
It needs an audit because kids were all over town.
Dr. Oje, we have Jamestown contract.
Sure. This request right here is simply to ask your permission that Mr. Draper and I negotiate with Jamestown. On the title of this, it lists teacher pension. And I am interested in talking with Jamestown about the terms of the contract. And it's a little premature for me to say, you know, everything that I'm thinking about this. But basically, I'm just, again, seeing that pension number coming in and feeling that that is certainly something that we need to consider in terms of our per pupil expenditure. And I feel that it is fitting to talk, at least begin discussions with Jamestown about their role in that and as it applies to the students from Jamestown that come to the high school. Otherwise, I am perfectly fine with the formula. But I would like to open it up to look at that with members from Jamestown. And I feel it would be appropriate that Ned Draper and myself do that. And I would bring that back to you. Proposal to that end on October 11th, and that would give you time to vote for it by the October 25th meeting.
Mrs. Avanzato.
Just want to make a procedural point, much the same as some, as an earlier item, a point was made by Mr. Mudge. I don't believe that this item needs to be on the agenda. I think that is within your purview as superintendent of schools to negotiate with Jamestown and talk to them and then come back to us. Obviously, we have to approve anything that's done. But I understand, for transparency's sake, you wanted to come to the committee. I don't think it's really necessary.
Also, during our budget subcommittee, there was some discussion about bringing something up to the end of having, you know, voting on school committee members to be a part of the negotiating team. And that's why I brought this up. I just wanted to be clear and have everyone's approval right up front that this is how we would proceed. And in order to meet the timeline, in order to get this, this first stage of the whole process taken care of before November 1st, which is an important date in the process.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve Mr. Draper and Dr. Oje negotiating.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Mrs. Avanzato and then Mr. Thompson.
Just, I support the two of you doing this without school committee members. I just think it's much more likely to be successful. I also would just think we ought to be careful what we discuss now, as always, you know, when we're talking about negotiations.
Sure.
Mr. Thompson.
I would like to do a revote on the April 26 contract in order for us to be able to talk a little bit about what we seem to think is in the current contract that we're operating under right now. And so, I would like to make that as an amended motion. To the main motion is to revoke the 4/26/11 contract.
I'll second the discussion.
I think that's improper. We can't take a revote on something. You can't revoke. Especially, so, so no, you can't do that. You've got to roll that out of order. Yeah, you can't revoke a vote you already took. You can vote to reconsider, but you need to put that on the agenda.
I asked for it to be on the agenda, actually. But it's called a vote to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson, you still have the floor.
I think it would be very important for the transparency that we've been talking about and also the, when we get through to the end of this process of this year's negotiations, that the town has the feeling that they have been well represented. And I think it's important that some member of the school committee also be there, not necessarily the lead negotiator, but simply be a part of that so that the school committee can feel like that we've had a part of this thing. We are given to understand, and of course, the April 26 contract has never been put in an open document of the packet of the school committee. Still hasn't been put there. It has never been explained to the town by the lawyer. She's never gone through it and explained what's in the contract. We understand that we are subsidizing approximately 25% of the cost of each Jamestown student in the high school. We understand that there's no administrative fee included in this contract. We understand that Jamestown is perhaps getting a refund of eight hundred and eleven dollars per high school student and is not passing that along to North Kingston.
I am going to ask the comments be limited.
And we've now understood the most important.
I would ask the comments be limited to.
I've just got to the most important one.
The motion on the floor.
Is that we've dropped out the bond payment, which means that when we go in front of that town council and ask for more money for the schools, they're going to say to us, we're sorry, there's too much money going to the bond payment. All these features should be brought out to the public so the public gets an understanding of exactly what we're doing.
That's okay. Never mind, Linda.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Dr. Oje if he would like to comment on what is on the website.
Could I make some comments, please?
Not right now. I'm going to let Dr. Oje respond.
Well, you know, the information is, is on, the Jamestown contract is on our website. So, you know, there is that level of transparency. I don't know what else to say. My feeling about this proposal is simply, I want to make it a clean process. I have no problem with transparency. When I make a proposal on October 11th, I plan on, you know, answering questions, any that you may have, and talking about the rationale. And I will give you a listing of what items are going into the formula. And it will be your vote from there on in to say yes or no. I can't make it any cleaner than that. I have, you know, also talked about this with Mike Embry, and he feels that it is the, you know, school district's role to negotiate this contract. So, you know, I don't feel like I'm doing something that the town ought to be doing or that we're doing anything that the town ought to be doing. And I think, you know, I'd just like to take it that way and make it a nice, clean process.
Thank you, Dr. Oje. Mr. Mudge.
Just to follow up what Mr. Thompson said. Could somebody tell me what the rate for the Jamestown tuition contract is and what was approved in April? What was the approved rate? Because this, this committee did not approve a rate, to best of my knowledge. The only rate we approved was in December, excuse me, January 11th or something. We approved a rate back then. So, could anybody, please tell me what the new rate is? I've never been able to get that answered. Mr. Draper, could you help me there? What was the rate that the school committee approved? Right, that's a different question. What is the rate that the school committee approved? The rates are as follows. Well, no, what did rate that the school committee approved?
Mr. Draper has the floor. You've asked him a question. Let's give him a chance to answer it, please.
The rates are as follows, and that's based upon the contract. General education is ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars per general education student. Special education is thirty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents per student. And ESL is forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents per student. You didn't answer my question.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Would you hear my point of order, please?
Let me hear your point of order.
My point of order is, the discussion on the original Jamestown contract is completely irrelevant and has nothing to do with authorizing Dr. Oje and Mr. Draper to go to Jamestown to talk about the pension. It's irrelevant to the motion. It's three minutes to adjournment, and I'd like to take a vote.
Well, I would, may I?
I'm going to ask that your questions be limited to not the contract that has already been voted on, but merely to authorizing Dr. Oje to go over and talk about student pensions.
How can you negotiate a contract? We don't know what the rate is right now.
Do you have a question?
What is the rate? I asked, what is the rate that the town, that this school committee approved? Can somebody tell me what the rate?
Mr. Draper has given you that answer?
No, no, no. What is the rate that the school committee approved?
Okay. All right, at this point.
Continuing on, as long as I can to an answer. Continuing on, please, okay?
Mr. Mudge, I am going to rule on that you are out of order according to the point of order that has been made, so.
We can't have dialogue here. What guidance are we going to give the superintendent of schools?
All right.
What guidance for him to negotiate? No guidance?
Mr. Mudge.
Are we going to have the debt service in there? Are we going to have the fact?
I'm ruling you out of order.
I'm out of order. Well, I think that this is incredibly incompetent.
And thank you very much.
Point of order.
Okay, we now have a motion on the floor. Yes, Mrs. Benson, what is your point of order?
My point of order is, I wasn't, I had to go to the, and I did not hear Mr. Draper's amount. And I didn't, I don't know what the motion was. So, I cannot hold on anything. I haven't heard the figures.
Well, we can give you the figures.
So, with your permission, would you be, with your permission, would you let him repeat them? Otherwise, they are pushed down the toilet.
Yes, I will let him repeat. I will let him repeat the figures, but then we're going to vote on the motion because they don't have to do it, the motion. But, Mr. Draper, you could repeat the figures, please.
For general education student, it's ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. For a special education student, it's thirty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight cents. And for an English as a second language student, it is forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Does that include debt service and capital investments?
Mr. Draper has the floor, and Mrs. Benson has the floor. So, Mrs. Benson, did you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. Thank you so much. Mr. Draper, is that going to be, or is that coming up for the contract that you and the superintendent are going to negotiate, that amount?
Yeah, it would impact that amount, yes, because that's the tuition calculation.
That's the tuition calculation that you're going to negotiation with now?
Correct. That would be the basis of our discussion.
Have you, so, that would be the tuition that a North Kingston student would pay also for the next year?
If someone were coming to the district, we'd have to probably.
Often about, I live at seventy show acres. My little darling go to the high school.
It's based.
And I go to town hall to pay the tax. I would know as a town taxpayer that the students go to the high school. It costs, what was your figures, ten thousand?
Ten thousand, one eighty-three.
So, I would know when I get my tax bill that ten thousand, one eighty-three is the rate that we are paying for a student to go to, go to this school.
No, it works differently if you live in, within the community.
Well, what would be the difference?
Well, transportation would be one of the differences. Another thing that's in the contract covers some of the overhead costs. How about debt service?
Mr. Draper has the floor, please.
Oh, could he answer that question? Is debt service in there?
I'm going to get around to that one.
Capital equipment?
Mr. Draper has the floor, please.
Not answering the questions, that's the problem.
Mr. Draper has the floor.
The formula is based on the expenses. It does not include the bond payments. It includes the expenses as assessed through the Yoko accounting process.
Well, how are we going to pay for the bonds if we are not expecting anything out of that ten thousand dollars from that tuition? When the school was built, and we have a member sitting here who was a member of the building committee, who wanted to go even deeper than that, and we wouldn't have this conversation had we traveled that way, he wanted him to be on the bond.
Okay, we're moving out of the question, the motion on the floor. And that the motion on the floor is to go over and talk about pensions. And so, we're talking about the bond. If you do not agree with that, you can vote against the margin.
I didn't say I agree or disagree. I have questions, would you please?
Your question is outside of the motion on the table.
How can he, Dr. Oje, talk about just the pension? He's not going to talk about one thing.
Okay.
And this is just, I mean, this is not a very professional way to handle this. And we're putting Dr. Oje in a very intolerable situation.
The motion is going to be read to remind the committee what the motion is.
The motion is to authorize Ned Draper and Dr. Oje to negotiate with Jamestown regarding the pension cost as it relates to the tuition.
I'd like to amend the motion, please.
After it's passed the.
I'd like to amend the motion, please.
We have a motion on the floor.
I would like to amend the motion.
I heard you. If, only if your motion is in contradiction of the motion.
May I, may I state my motion, please? May I have that prerogative? May I amend the motion, Madam Chair?
I'll listen to what your amendment is, and then I will rule on whether the amendment is allowable or not.
I'd like to amend the motion to Dr. Oje to include, okay, a discussion on the bond rate cost and the capital cost, okay, that have not previously been in the contracts. Two, second part of the motion is to have Dr. Oje review and discuss the fiscal year thirteen rate based on fiscal year twelve cost, not fiscal year eleven cost. Updated cost. Let me check that. I misspoke. Based on expected fiscal year thirteen cost, fiscal year thirteen, not on fiscal year eleven cost. So, Dr. Oje wants to go over and discuss those two issues, I'd be glad to listen to what he has to say, okay, and what he comes back with, but.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Is that for your amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
That's for the amended motion?
Right now, Mr. Mudge has made an amendment. There needs to be a second to his amendment.
Second.
Second.
Is, Attorney Carol, is that something that we needed to advertise for?
Well, you know what, Madam Chair? Vote on it.
I have a question about it.
Okay. But I want you to keep in mind that we have a contract with Jamestown that has already been approved.
Right.
The only thing that this particular item on the agenda is supposed to discuss is the fact that teacher pensions are going up, and the superintendent wanted an opportunity to speak to Jamestown about the increased pensions.
Well, the motion is moot.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
The motion is moot.
Is there any, is there any further discussion on the amendment? On the amendment?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Avenzato.
With the legal staff.
I have a question, Ms. Carol, for, on the amendment. Are we able to direct the superintendent to talk about A and B?
No.
Okay, then why, the motion's out of order then, isn't it? Amendment?
Vote on the, I think you should just vote it.
Well, we should know if it's out of order. I mean, that's.
The only thing on the agenda is to discuss pensions, because I believe that the issue that came up was the fact that there was going to be a big increase in pensions this year, and the student, superintendent wanted the opportunity to discuss that with Jamestown, the increased pensions, because the way the contract is, the increase that we'll have in pensions next year wouldn't get picked up till the following year. So there needs to be discussion with Jamestown. Are you going to help us out with the increased pensions that we're going to have in fiscal year 2012? That was the only purpose of putting it on the agenda.
Right, so I'm amending the motion to add, to add these two other items. One is.
Not on the agenda. So all we need to do is either vote it up or down. Mr. Welsh, I think you should vote.
Can this out of order?
Can I, can I just say that regardless of whether it's on the agenda, the calls for both sides.
To agree.
To come to an agreement by November 1st.
Right.
Annually.
Right.
Thank you.
May I comment on that, Mr. Welsh?
I believe, I believe the contract.
Can I comment, please?
You're getting habit-forming, Greenwood.
No, no, what I'd like to, may I add a comment, please? There was no requirement. Madam Chair.
I have not recognized anybody.
Madam Chair, may I?
Ms. Carol, isn't it true that the contract states that the contract continues to roll over unless we're going to pull out of the contract by November 1st? So it's not as if the contract comes up for renewal again. It's merely that if, we only bring up the contract if we were going to pull out.
Well, it's Jamestown, so we don't need to really do anything. There's no obligation, there's no obligation.
We have, I'm going to ask, Mrs. Halt, would you like to have any comment on the motion on the floor?
Well, we're, we're operating under the same November 1st deadline, too, because as you may have read in the newspapers, we are also in discussions with Narragansett and East Greenwich, possibly Portsmouth, but we're not sure. And so we, we know that we have to notify you if we intend to not continue sending high school students to your district by November 1st. So we, we recognize this deadline, and I think that having, having financial discussions is certainly a part of, of the process, because we're collecting the financial information, you know, the proposals from the other districts.
We don't have an obligation.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Halt has the floor.
By November 1st.
Thank you. Was there anything else that you wanted to say?
No, I think the, the discussions as to any alterations in the rates does seem pretty, I wasn't aware, we haven't discussed this at any of our school committee meetings. I don't know if we would be likely to have any school committee members participating. It seems like the preliminary discussions would probably be between superintendents, and then I would expect that that would be brought to us at a meeting for our approval.
May I ask a question, please?
One question, and then I'd really like to call the amendment motion. Motion to call the question.
Madam Chair, the town council sent a bill to the Jamestown school for 262,000. I would like to know if Jamestown has addressed that.
So let's go ahead and call the question. What question are you calling?
The amendment.
The amendment. The amendment. I thought the amendment was out of order. Vote the amendment.
An amendment out of order.
No. Vote the amendment.
Did we call the question first or was it voted?
No, vote the amendment.
Okay. On the amendment.
You're able to stand behind the attorney.
We're looking at the amendment. Joe Thompson. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
I didn't think it was with you.
Richard Welsh.
No.
I agree with that.
Linda Avenzato.
No.
Mel Boyd Benson.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, no, no.
William Mudge.
No, no. Yes.
Kimberly Page.
No.
Okay, motion fails to reach you. Okay, now we have the main motion. Could you read back the main motion, please?
This was to authorize Ned Draper and Dr. Oje to negotiate with Jamestown as it relates to pension cost and the tuition.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avenzato.
Yes.
Mel Boyd Benson.